Both them to collapse, causing both of them to collapse in the Pentagon in Washington, inflicting several severe damage. Fourth terrorist hijacked plane crashed into a field in Shanksville, Pennsylvania when passengers who became aware of the attacks may attempt to take the plane back. Whereas that day and days that followed our country was united. Americans, no matter race, background, or religion, were all united in prayer and with resolve to help the families of the victims and first responders who never given opportunity to live out their full lives. And whereas on Patriot Day, a National Day of Service and Remembrance, we honor every life that was taken too soon. We honor the first responders, firefighters, law enforcement officers, emergency workers, and service members, who all answered the call of duty, and the brave civilians who rushed into action to save lives that day. The courage embodies their American spirit and resilience, and their heroism continues to inspire new generations of Americans. And whereas it is our sacred duty to never forget the events that transpired on the painful day in our country's history, so future generations can be reminded that when Americans from all walks of life unite together, we are stronger as a country. Now therefore, Dr. Christopher Harvey, Mayor of the City of Maynor, Texas, and on behalf of the Maynor City Council, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, September 11, 2024, as National Day of Service and Remembrance of 9/11 Day. In the city of Maynor, and called upon all citizens to observe this day with appropriate ceremonies and activities, including remembrance ceremonies, and to observe a moment of silence began at 8:46 a.m. Eastern Daylight Time, to honor the victims, the innocent victims who perished as a result of terrorist attacks on September 11, 2021. And witness thereof, I am to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Maynor to be affixed this fourth day of September, 2024. Dr. Christopher Harvey, Mayor, Senior Mayor. Next, we have declaring September 15, and October 15 through October 15, 2024, as Hispanic Heritage Month. Proclamation, whereas the Hispanic Heritage Observance began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon Johnson, and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988. And whereas National Heritage Month celebrates the accomplishments of Hispanic Americans who have enriched our culture and society, and helped make America into an incredible country it is today. And whereas Hispanic American men and women embodied the American values of devotion to faith and family, hard work, and patriotism through their countless contributions as leaders, innovators, entrepreneurs, and members of our armed forces. And whereas Hispanics have enhanced and shaped our natural character with centuries-old traditions that reflected multi-ethnic and multicultural customs of their communities, while adding their own distinct and dynamic perspectives to the story of our country. And whereas September 15 through October 15 is recognized as National Hispanic Heritage Month, which is a time to honor the invaluable ways Hispanics contribute to our common goals, celebrate their diverse cultures, and to work towards a stronger, more inclusive, and more prosperous society for all. And whereas Hispanic Americans represent a significant and fast-growing demographic of the city of Maynor, we honor the invaluable ways they contribute to our great city. Now therefore, Dr. Christopher Harvey, Mayor of the City of Maynor, Texas, on behalf of the Maynor City Council, do hereby proclaim September 15 through October 15, 2024, as Hispanic Heritage Month. In the city of Maynor, encourage all citizens to learn more about those Hispanic heritage, those of Hispanic heritage, and to observe this month with appropriate programs and activities. And witness thereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Maynor to be affixed this fourth day, September 24. Dr. Christopher Harvey, Mayor, City of Maynor. And although we don't have an announcement regarding the event, but can you come on up and share regarding the event coming up in October?
Hi, I'm Yalondra Valderrama, Heritage and Heritage Manager for the city of Maynor. Hi, Mayor, City Council. We're planning our first Hispanic Heritage Celebration on October 5. It will be a ten-minute par from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. We're going to have cultural and folklorical performance, market, a lot of fun, food trucks, so we invite everybody in the community to come and celebrate with us. And we're still accepting vendor applications into September 20. Anybody have any questions?
All right. Do I want to get a photo?
Yes.
Okay. Come on in.
Recognize my Latin flavor?
Let's see, who wants the... All right. All right. Thank you all for your patience. One last proclamation, declaring Tuesday, September 17, 2024, as National Voter Registration Day. All right. Proclamation, whereas the National Association of Secretaries of State, NASS, established the first National Voter Registration Day on September 25, 2012. And whereas each year, millions of Americans find themselves unable to vote because they missed the registration deadline, don't update their registration, or aren't sure how to register. And whereas on Tuesday, September 17, volunteers and organizations from all over the country will hit the streets in a single day of coordination, coordinated field, technology, and media efforts. And whereas National Voter Registration Day seeks to create broad awareness of voter registration opportunities to reach tens of thousands of voters who may not register otherwise. And whereas National Voter Registration Day is a day of civic unity, it's an opportunity to set aside differences, enjoy the rights and opportunities we all share as Americans, and celebrate our democracy. Now therefore, Dr. Christopher Harvey, Mayor of the City of Maynor, Texas, and on behalf of Mayor, Maynor City Council, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, September 17, 2024, as National Voter Registration Day. In the city of Maynor, encourage all citizens to register to vote and make your voices heard and vote count. And witness thereof, I here unto set my hand and cause it to be affixed the seal of the city of Maynor on this fourth day, September 24. Dr. Christopher Harvey, Mayor, City of Maynor. All right. Thank you all for your patience again. Moving right along to public comments, non-agenda items on the public, for public comments on the white card. Comments will be taken from audience member on non-agenda-related topics for a length of time not to exceed three minutes per person. And let's see what we have here. We have two public comments, and then one is for the public here. All right. Let's start off with Mr. Dunlop.
Hello, sir. Evening, Mayor Council. I was here on behalf of Keep Maynor Beautiful, as their chairperson, for their event next week, in support of National Day of Service. So next Saturday, on September 14, we're meeting here at City Hall, starting at 8:30 as check-in. The event is nine to noon. We're going to be spreading wildflower seeds around the downtown area. It's a program the city used to do for a couple of years in the unused alleys. They put out some wildflower seeds, and so I've been working with Matt and Lance. Some of the signs are still there, but the program wasn't kept up. Samsung was gracious enough to provide KMB with a $2,500 grant that we used to purchase these wildflower seeds from a local company, so it's a local wildflower mix that we're putting down. It's enough seeds to cover about three acres, so we're going to have a little map of the areas to plant the seeds, and all the supplies will be provided, so we'll have hand spreaders and all the vests, and we're going to have some coffee and pastries to everyone setting up. So yes, I would encourage all of y'all, if you'd like to come out next Saturday, from nine to noon here at City Hall, to spread some wildflower seeds around town. And I'll leave these with Uvia, if you want some.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good to see you. All right. Next up, Ms. Faye Carter.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to say I really thank y'all, how when you get criticized and kind of harsh, you just look straight ahead. You just, I like that. So thank y'all for your service. But I wanted to say that I'm 81, and I marched with Dr. King in the 60s, here in Texas, but he was everywhere. And so I really think that we helped to get America where it is now, as a great country. I think it's the greatest country in the world. And so I really am thankful that I forgave everything that happened in the past, because if you don't forgive others, then you don't get forgiven. It's like gravity, it's a force in the earth. And y'all took part of my, what I wanted to say, "One nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all." I love that, and so that's my life. And I get to come on KLBJ on Fridays with Faye, and so I talk about our country not being divided, but being, I think we got that name special instead of Australia or Africa, it's the United States. So I'm just praying that we do like Dr. King and I, he gave his life, and we really marched about that being the United States of America. I think he saw what the potential was, and we could be a great, great nation, and the world needs us to be a great nation. And so I'm just encouraging us to be United States of America, don't be divided States of America, and one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for every, everyone. So let's see, what else I want to say? Is my time up?
Yeah, 50 seconds. Yeah, 50 seconds.
But Fridays with Faye, I mean, who would have thought that? So around nine-ish or eight-ish. So listen at me and see what I'm saying on KLBJ. Okay, I love everybody.
Thank you. All right. That concludes public comments, so we're going to move into public hearings. Number one, conduct a public hearing to receive public comments on proposed franchise ordinance to provide solid waste and recycling collection and disposing services within the city of Maynor. Mr. Jones. And we have a comment by Mr., is it Elbretan Zela? Okay, I'm sorry. Oh, it's X, I'm sorry. Braxton, it looked like a YK. Braxton, Zelia?
Zella.
Zella. Braxton Zella, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Council. I'm here tonight with Texas Disposal Systems, and we've eagerly responded to both of the recent solid waste and recycling RFPs for the city of Maynor. Come before you this evening to convey our sincere interest in serving the city. We're not only interested in the city's business, but our sincere concern is in forming a mutually beneficial partnership with the city. There's many accomplishments, accolades, and revel in experience attributable to the history of TDS that I could cite before you this evening, but our response to the RFP that your staff commissioned already did so, and the executive summary that Ryan's giving you right now also does so. Tonight, the thing I think it worthy to convey to you all, as you preside over this great city, is that with TDS stands the potential for a great partnership marked by both excellence and longevity. The fact is that our track record with our municipal partners in the Austin market is such. In this company's almost 48 years of existence, we've never been left by any of the cities that we've served in this market. It's relatively easy for anyone to come before you and talk about what they will or could do, but I believe those long-term partnerships I just referenced have endured because of the things that we don't do. So one, we don't leave the job incomplete. It's a service-oriented, logistics-based business, and mistakes happen, but our commitment will always be to make things right if there is a mistake. Second, we don't shy away from the challenges of growth. We're already here, both in proximity and in principle, to stand by the city of Maynor as you grow. And third, we don't get comfortable. We'll view it as a privilege to serve this city, and we won't take that privilege for granted. We're confident that together we can produce an enduring partnership, and we ask that you as the council will consider us for such a partnership tonight. This evening, you'll be considering which company will be your fourth service provider in the last seven years. The contract you're considering is worth over $10 million, and it's a very big decision. We believe we're the right one, and we will certainly be around for any questions that you might have, should you choose to go there. Thanks for your time this evening and throughout the process, appreciate you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jones.
I don't have any other further comments, Mayor, City Council. I think you have information coming and the future items at your disposal, information in your package, and I'll leave it to the city manager's discretion. He's informed you of his information, and so with that, I'll leave you all. If there's nobody else speaking, then we can close the public hearing.
Questions, council members? Yeah, questions regarding public hearing item? Do you? No? Go ahead.
Maybe it's not a, but maybe a question slash comment, just from, from the speaker, Mr. Braxton, was saying earlier, that this would be our fourth company within the last seven years, and so I just wanted to know if the last three times that they, that we've had, have they provided, have they submitted an RFP with us during those times and been denied since they wouldn't, they weren't with us before? You know what I mean? Have they done this? Does anyone know? Mr. Braxton or someone, like the company?
I think, Mayor Council, I think the last contract that the city entered was 2019, if I'm not mistaken, right before COVID. And I think, again, that predates a lot of, some of the upper management here, but if the process was followed, the contract was adhered to, this was the process that was established with that RFP process, and not sure which firms did participate. But at the time, that each, with legal counsel can advise, each contract was pretty much carried out based on contract law, based on services that were asked through the RFP process. And we were looking at doing something in 2022 when I was here, but in, and based on the timing, we just didn't have enough time to try to do something in '22. Even if we looked in '23, we realized there was something in the ordinance that we needed to do, part of the charters, we had to do the solid waste ordinance. And so that's why, even in the process with this company and the others that participated, we had to reset, so that way we could follow the charter ordinance and not find ourselves in the situation that we had a misstep. And so that was part of the process of wanting to make sure we, we had a process that if challenged legally, we can say we, it was published, and we did everything according to the deadline set up in the process, and the TDS and Republic and some of the other major trash haulers did, participated back in 2021 timeframe, that would have, they would have resubmitted again. And I think those that were interested in this proposal, they see the market and see where things are going, and I think the residents have wanted more, and so that's why through the process, we asked for more bulk pickup, different things that have made it obvious that we were missing with the past contract. And doing, one example is when we had the ice storm, we had a situation to where things were pretty obvious that the current contractor couldn't provide certain services for us. So part of the process was to go out and be a comprehensive approach and say, what else, what the citizens want? And here's the process in which all participant contractors could submit based on that. And so, again, anything prior to '22 would be pure, you know, speculation if there's something exactly from a contractor that submitted a proposal then, and now it's just the process, you know, here's the scope of service that the city was requesting, and everybody submitted based on that scope.
Thank you. So we, in the past, we've never had a contract with TDS before?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. And I guess I was just wondering why they, they've been around for almost 50 years now, and we've been here for a while, so I was just wondering what the attraction to Maynor now, because we were here before, and with the other previous opportunities to come into a contract with us? That's all.
Right, and I think due to the, just to the growth and everything that's happening in the county and neighboring cities, I think that's always something that's interesting to, to companies that do this. And they were, they were one of the companies that have been around, but also the process is, here's the scope, and here's the weight, and everything was weighted out based on the responses and based on everything that was requested in the RFP.
Thank you.
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing on item number one.
Well, I have a recommendation, a motion, I'm sorry, on the floor by Councilwoman Wallace. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, got it.
Second, my son. Second.
There we go. A second by Councilwoman Weir. Any questions to the motion? Any additional questions?
I did want to know how your company compares or differentiates itself from your competition in bulk pickup.
Mr.? Okay.
So how, the question was how our company differentiates itself regarding bulk pickup? Well, it depends on the needs of the city, but one of the things you'll often run into with bulk pickup is, is if you say, okay, well, it's going to be an all-or-nothing pickup day, everybody gets picked up. What happens many times is that there, there will be a situation where there won't be enough capacity by the end of day, so half the people in town might have gotten picked up, the other half gets left behind. It's very difficult to prepare. So with many of the cities, what we do, say differentiate, differentiate ourselves, and this is in order that we are able to keep the commitment that we have with those communities, with those customers, is that we'll actually set it up to where it's on a schedule. As you need it, you can call that service in, and we're able to route for exact, we know, we know going into that day what we're going to need to collect, and no one is left behind at the end of the day, wondering why their bulky items might not have been collected. Just, it allows us to prepare better, it's just, it's a better, ultimately, a better service model.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Other questions? Being done, I'll take it to a vote on the paper. Pose, motion passes. We'll move on to public hearing number two. Conducting public hearing on fiscal year 2024, 2025, proposed property tax rate of the city of Maynor, Texas. See, we don't have anyone signed up for that. Ms. Pena, did you have anything you want to add? Or share?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Yes, the tax rate we are proposing for fiscal year 24, 25 is .8537 cents of $100 for each, I'm sorry, each $100 valuation from the property. And out of that, .5178 is for operations and maintenance, and .3359 for debt rate. That will be affected- That, uh, will be effective if approved, um, October first.
Okay. Questions, council members?
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing on item number two.
Well, a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Wallace. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Councilwoman Westmore. Any questions to the motion? No questions to the motion, all in favor? Pos, motion passes. Moving on to public hearing number three. Uh, conducting public hearing on fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five proposed annual budget for the city of Maynor, Texas. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, uh, the general fund budget will, uh, is a balanced budget and will be, uh, raising, uh, twenty-two point one million dollars, uh, the same as expenses. Uh, we have the utility funds, which has eight point three million dollars, it's also a balanced budget. And we have the additional, uh, special revenues like hotel, um, motel is a hundred and forty thousand. And, uh, we have, uh, also the impact fees and that is a eight hundred and forty-four thousand in water, two millions in wastewater and one point two for capital budgets.
Okay. Questions, council member about the budget? I know we had a ton of workshops, so I might be ready to get this down with. Any other questions? I take questions or a motion?
Mayor, Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing on item number three.
All right, we have a, a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Wallace. Is there a second? A second. Second by Councilmember Moreno. Any questions to the motion? Any question to the motion? Being none, all in favor? Pos, motion passes, Nancy.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, consent agenda, all the items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by council and will be enacted on motion. But we know separate discussion of items unless requested by the mayor or a council member in which the item will be removed from consent agenda considered separately. Number four, consideration discussion of possible action to approve the city council minutes on July seventeenth, August fifth, August seventh, August twentieth, August twenty-first, August twenty-seventh. Number five, consideration discussion of possible action on accepting the July twenty twenty-four city council monthly reports. And number six, consideration discussion of possible action on accepting the July twenty-four departmental reports. Seven, consideration discussion of possible action on amendment to sidewalk trail and recreation easement. All right, if there's no request to put out, I'll take a motion for the consent agenda.
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Well, a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Westmore. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Councilwoman Wallace. Any questions to the motion? Any questions to the motion? Being none, all in favor? Oppose, motion passes. All right, moving on to regular agenda items. All right. We're gonna actually circle to number eight, nine. We'll come back to eight. Number nine, consideration discussion of possible action on a statement of work number thirty-four to the master services agreement with George Butler Associates for Emergency Generator Improvements Project at City Hall and a police station. Mr. Frank?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
So this particular project, um, I actually looked back at the records, um, in preparation for this and, uh, was first conceived of in twenty seventeen. Um, but we've been working with, um, uh, police department staff, Lieutenant Allen. Um, and this is a, uh, project to install emergency generators at, uh, the police department and at city hall. Um, the project is, um, being primarily funded through, um, the Texas Department of Emergency Management through the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. And so we have in there a proposal, an amendment to our master services agreement for, um, project management bidding, construction, uh, design and construction phase services to, um, get the, uh, generators installed so you'll have emergency power at both facilities. So very excited to present this to you all for your consideration.
Any question, council members? I know we talked about those generators, um, since the, those past incidents.
Do you know what type of generators are gonna be?
Um, well, they're gonna be automatic generators. Um, my recollection was, I think we had talked about, ah, it's definitely diesel or propane. I'd have to go back and look on these two particular, most of the other, uh, generators in town are diesel. Yeah.
Yeah, I thought back in twenty seventeen, you said diesel.
Slept since then.
And these will have like warranty, right?
Yes, they'll have, they'll have the, uh, standard, uh, city warranty. And the city has, uh, contracts for maintenance of generators that are at all the facilities. Um, so these, I imagine will be rolled into the same contracts as well too, to make sure that they actually start when, when they're supposed to.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I said, I think the key for getting PD and city hall is because of our, our operations, uh, but also the maintenance side of things. Because we know if you don't, you can get them, if we don't get them on that regular schedule, we wanna make sure. Brand new could be one thing, but still we wanna make sure, um, these units can be able to function and be tested. So if we can plan to put them on a test schedule, we can run them an hour or so, thirty minutes or so would be something we wanna do. So we'll make sure that proximity to the neighbors, that it doesn't create an issue, but making sure we exercise them once they're installed and make sure that's part of our O and M.
Yeah, they'll have sound attenuating enclosures and, and critical mufflers to, to reduce the, the sound. They typically exercise, um, all the other generators about once a week, um, just automatically start up and run through a, a run and cooldown cycle. And then typically it's every six months that, uh, generators are serviced, go in and check fluids and filters and all that sort of thing.
Okay. Other questions?
Is the grant gonna cover the whole forty-eight seats?
No, it covers a, a portion of, of the, so there is a city portion that, um, is required.
And usually it's like seventy-five percent, right?
Yeah, it's in that neighborhood. Probably have to ask Lieutenant Allen what that was exactly.
If it's, if we're talking about from an emergency?
Yeah, through, through TDM.
Yeah, it's usually seventy-five, twenty-five.
I think the percentage on this was eighty-seven percent and it was thirteen percent for the city.
Was it?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it was a little higher, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, so more, more of the, more of the grant covers the cost, yeah.
So eighty-seven percent, eighty-seven percent.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Entertaining a motion?
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the proposed statement of work number thirty-four to the master services agreement with George Butler Associates, Inc. for the Emergency Generator Improvements Project in the amount of forty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars.
Well, a motion on the floor by Councilmember Moreno. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Councilwoman Wallace. Any questions to the motion? Any question to the motion? Being none, all in favor? Pos, motion passes. Number ten, consideration discussion of possible action on a resolution of city of Maynor, Texas approving authorized a new Haven Public Improvement District financing agreement.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Veronica Rivera's Assistant City Attorney. Um, with regard to the finance agreement, we do have the developers' council and bond council here to an, answer any questions. I'm here just to provide you one revision that I apologize we did not catch when we provided you a copy of the agreement. And that is to the recital on page one, um, at the bottom of the page, the third, third from the bottom or third up, um, that talks about the acquisition and reimbursement agreement. That has, did not come, uh, to you at this agenda. It will be coming to you at the next agenda. So we want to revise the recital to state that it is contemplated that the owner and the city will enter into an acquisition and reimbursement agreement as authorized by the PIT Act. So, um, we will provide that red line and those changes to, um, the city secretary if, uh, you so choose to move forward and approve this agreement. And I'm also here to answer any questions.
Questions, comments? I'll take questions or comments? Or a motion?
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve resolution number twenty twenty-four dash twenty-seven of the city of Maynor, Texas, approving and authorizing the New Haven Public Improvement District Financing Agreement.
We need, and you need some language for legal.
As revised.
As revised by legal.
Well, a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Wallace. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Councilwoman, uh, Westmore. Any questions to the motion? Any questions to the motion? Being none, all in favor? Oppose, motion passes. Number eleven, consideration discussion of possible action on resolution supporting a submission of a U.S. Economic Development Administration's EDA Public Works Assistance Grant Application. Mr. Moore?
Mayor Council, on this one, I would like to table this one. Um, we're still working on some information that we had a call that we need to get some more information, so we can table that, it'd be perfect.
Okay, so.
Sure.
Until.
Uh, once we get everything, we need to get back with the grant administrator and we got a couple more questions we need to ask one of our companies that, that we're trying to pursue, uh, more information from, which is Hawn's. They were gonna be the major beneficiary of submitting this grant, so just had some more questions we need to get from them before we submit the application.
Okay.
So it could be hopefully October.
So it just need a proposal to move to another date?
Yes, sir.
What date?
The second.
Now, we're likely gonna, probably two meetings from now, I would just say, the October, middle of October meeting would probably be a good timeline.
Um, that would be October sixteen? Sixteen? No?
No.
It's not sixteen? Huh? Okay.
October second, okay.
Okay. Um, I'm, I'm looking over there 'cause I'm waiting for y'all to do a motion. I didn't say do a motion. Um, is there a motion?
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone item number eleven to the October sixteenth, uh, regular city council meeting.
Uh, motion on the floor by Councilmember Moreno. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Councilwoman Wallace. Any questions to the motion? Any question to the motion? Being none, all in favor? Pos, motion passes. Number twelve, consideration discussion of possible action on ordinance approval in twenty twenty-four annual update to service assessment plan and assessment roles for Lagos, um, Public Improvement District, including the collection of twenty twenty-four annual installments. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Robert Haslip with P Three Works. We are the city's, uh, PIT administrator. Uh, so this document is the two thousand twenty-four SAP update, uh, for the Public Improvement District. Um, this is required by statute. There's nothing that's changed to the structure or financing of the PIT. Uh, to give a brief background on the PIT, there is a major improvement area and an improvement area one. Uh, with approximately a hundred and ninety-two lots in the major improvement area and three hundred and seventy-nine lots, three hundred and ninety-seven lots in the improvement area one.
All right. Questions, council members, or a motion?
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the ordinance number seven five seven approving the Lagos Public Improvement District twenty twenty-four annual service plan update, including the collection of the twenty twenty-four annual installments.
Uh, motion on the floor by Councilwoman Weir. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tem and Mehe. Any questions to the motion? Any questions to the motion? Being none, all in favor? Pos, motion passes. Number thirteen, consideration discussion of possible action on ordinance approval in twenty twenty-four annual update to service and assessment plan for assessment role for, um, Rose Hill, uh, Public Improvement District and including the collection of twenty twenty-four annual installments. Yes, sir.
Um, so the same as with Lagos, this is the twenty twenty-four update, uh, to the PIT. There's no change to the, uh, project structure or the financing. Um, the Rose Hill PIT was created in two thousand and three, so it's one of the oldest PIDs in the state and it has a little bit different structure than Lagos, which is a more modern PIT. Uh, it has an outstanding assessment of seven million, three hundred and fifty-three thousand, over twelve hundred and four lots. And the maximum assessment within the district is seven thousand, one hundred and two. And the minimum assessment is four thousand, six hundred and twelve per lot.
Thank you, sir. Motion on the floor?
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion, uh, that we adopt ordinance number seven five eight approving the Rose Hill Public Improvement District twenty twenty-four annual service plan updated, including and, including the collection of the twenty twenty-four annual installments.
A motion on the floor by Councilwoman Wallace. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilwoman Westmore. Any questions to the motion? Any questions to the motion? Being none, all in favor? Pos, motion passes. Uh, all right, moving on. Number fourteen, consideration discussion of possible action on supplement to the agreement, uh, for streetlight lighting service by and between Encore Electric Delivery Company and the city of Maynor for street lighting in the New Haven subdivision phase one. Yes, sir.
Mayor Council, uh, this agreement is essentially between Encore and us to provide and maintain streetlights in the subdivision phase one of New Haven. This isn't anything new. We have pre-existing agreements with them with Stonewater and I believe Palomino. I could be misremembering that, but we have done this with them before. It's just essentially allowing them to provide and maintain streetlights in the subdivision.
Okay. Questions?
Mayor, just a point of order. Can we get him to state his name for the record?
Uh, my name is Michael Burrell, interim development services director for the city of Maynor.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am. Other questions? If none, I'll take a motion.
How many phases are there for this one?
New Haven? Four. Four phases.
Other questions?
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve a supplement to the agreement for street lighting services by and between Encore Electric Delivery Company and the City of Maynor for street lighting in the New Haven subdivision Phase One and authorize the city manager to execute.
Motion on the floor by Councilwoman Wallace, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Councilwoman Moreno, any questions to the motion?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this the is this the standard of the distance between one light to the next for subdivisions? Does that make sense?
Are you asking if they're following like our standard streetlight detail, or?
Pauline Gray, GBA City Engineer, yes, the city has a standard detail with the minimum spacing is 180 feet between poles. They're supposed to be on alternating sides, so there, there's a standard, there's. And so that way, not all the lights are all on one side and they're not too close. And hopefully, they're spread out good enough. But the max is 220 feet in between.
Some of our older neighborhoods have a, probably at that 200. And so there's a lot of darker areas in some of those places. But with ours being more densely populated, some of our newer subdivisions, they're just wanting to have...
Well, what we can do when we review the plans, we can suggest they move them closer to the 180.
As long as it doesn't reduce the number.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. My only question is the, the legal review of the agreement. Does this lock us into other phases? For development, if we do this phase? Is that an assumption that we would do to other phases?
Veronica?
And you're not checking down if there can be a friendly amendment that can just add that legal review? And with that question in mind, then I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay, I'd like to make a friendly amendment that that we have legal review of whether or not we are locked into the other phases.
Amendment motion by Councilwoman Wallace, is it amended by a second?
A second.
Second and amended, approved by Councilwoman Moreno. Any questions to the motion? Any additional questions to the motion? Being none in all in favor? Oppose? Motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, moving along. Number 16, consideration discussion, possible action on change order to construction contract for the fiscal year 2022 Capitol Metro pavement improvements. I'm sorry, I missed 15, I'm sorry. Consideration discussion, possible action toward a contract, construction contract for the Maynor Commercial Park Water Wastewater Collection System and Carriage Hills Lift Station, number five, Phase One project. Yes, sir?
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. So this project is one that will serve wastewater over on the eastern side of town, specifically in the area near Maynor Commercial Park. This project is being primarily funded with SLFRF funds, the state and local fiscal recovery funds. And the project has been split into two phases. This is Phase One of the project, which will provide wastewater service to the area east of the Beltecs Development and provide for additional capacity within the lift station to serve commercial tracks all the way over to Lidded and all the way up to 290. So it's a, a, a good new chunk of area that will be served by this wastewater project. We opened bids on July 30th, and there were six responsive bidders. The lowest responsive responsible bidder was Pac Saddle Management LLC. We have contacted the bidder and they do want to do the project for the amount bid. We conducted our contractor qualification evaluations and everything came back good from their bank, their bonding company, their credit references, their project references. They're a newer company, only a few years old, but they have some very experienced project managers and people working for them and had good references. So we are recommending that the city award a construction contract to Pac Saddle Management LLC in the amount of $2,286,295 for all base bid work with final amounts to be dependent on installed quantities. And we prepared a notice of award and agreement for execution by you in the event the council votes to award construction contract. Any questions on the project?
Can you speak on some of their references, some of the other projects that they've worked on?
Yeah, so they provided a number of other projects. One was the Benton Offsite Force Main Project. That was a $2.4 million project that they did. Well, one of the project managers did while they were under C.C. Carlton. It's pretty common for contractors to have groups break off and start their own firm. And so this particular project manager for that project got several good references. Some of the other projects are, have been for Taylor Morrison up in the Treviso and other areas that they develop, a national home builder. We're familiar with them, we're familiar with the people who are their references. And so they were able to confirm, you know, good quality of the work. You know, not a lot of pursuits of change orders. You know, good paperwork, good communication, you know, timely delivery of the projects, those sorts of things. Other projects, you know, they had several that were in the $10 million range, so significantly larger than this. And yeah, just overall, everything came back good. All of their credit references were good. Their bank balances, they had two different accounts and they had six in one and seven figures in another. They're well within their bonding capacity of, what was it, $25 million aggregate, $6 million each occurrence. So they're, they're in, in good financial shape, you know, with all the submittals for this evaluation.
Cool, thank you.
Other questions? Any other questions, comments? Do you know the percentage? You said a large majority of it, what's the actual percentage for those recovery funds that they ordered for the, this amount?
Well, the, the recovery funds should be able to fund almost 100% of the Phase One and Phase Two projects. Right now, the, the recovery funds were about $3.4 million. And this is for not quite $2.3 million. Some estimates on the Phase Two were, were more preliminary in nature, but were about 1.2 million. So it, it should be able to cover almost the full majority of Phase One and Phase Two construction costs.
Okay, and then Phase Three, Four?
There, yeah, there aren't, there aren't Phases Three and Four for this. When we did the, you know, project scoping with city staff, we created the service area again that would serve the maximum area possible by that line, by gravity. And so we optimized it for size and capacity and, and, you know, keeping it as shallow as possible while still being able to serve the entire service area. So 100% of the capacity will be built into this for that area on the east side that's bounded between, you know, Parsons or Old Highway 20 and 290 and Lidded Road to the east and then, you know, the western side of Beltecs there on the west. So there shouldn't be any need for future expansions based on all of the land use projections and projected LUEs and so forth in that area.
Sounds good.
I would also add to, Mayor Council, is that as we look at the TURs and some of the other centers that Mr. Jones is working with, the TURS consultant, we're trying to find these areas that could be established. And if there's future expansion, the TURs will be a, a tool that we can use to allow those developments to be able to tie into some of the existing infrastructure that we put in place. So the, the, the goal is to try to make sure we establish the boundaries for those TURs. And then wherever we get left off for our utilities and still have the capacity, we'll better utilize that so that the private side can help kick in to help make sure that tool is available to expand the utilities to those developments.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Is there a motion on the floor?
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the construction contract for the Maynor Commercial Park Wastewater Collection System and Carriage Hills Lift Station. Number five, improvement, improvement phase project, one project to Pac Saddle Management LLC in the amount of $2,286,295 for the base bid.
Got a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Moreno, is there a second?
Aye, second.
Second by Mayor Protem, may I hear, any questions to the motion? Any questions to the motion? Being none in all in favor? Oppose? Motion passes. Consideration discussion, possible action on a change order to construction contract for fiscal year 2022 Capitol Metro Pavement Improvements Project. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, Mayor Council. So before you have a change order for the current fiscal year 2022 paving project, we're always a year behind. So I know it's confusing. We have extra Cap Metro funds, so I met with city staff and we met with the contractor and he's agreed to do some additional work at the prices that were set with his original bid. So if you look, there is a spreadsheet. We have approximately $330,000 for the change order and that's almost all of the money that is left from Cap Metro. The city does have the option to roll over that money for future use, but he gave us some really good numbers, so we are recommending to go ahead and approve the change order with the current numbers that he's given us. And it'll be 90 days additional work. But what it'll do, it'll finish out some of the sections, like Caldwell will be completely redone from, all the way from 290 up to Parsons now with the additional that, and we're doing Wheeler and Burnett and some of the other streets, Murray. So and I know people get a lot of complaints about Murray in that area, so like I said, you know, based on what we would get today when we're doing estimates, these numbers are really good. The city's got the money from Cap Metro, so city staff decided they want to go ahead and do an additional change order.
All right, questions, comments, councilmembers?
I would, I would say, Council, based on the work that was done by TechStot on when they opened the Lexington Parsons, the work that will be scheduled will be able to have a lack of complete, most of the streets to tie into that would look like complete. And so I think that's kind of, I think we looked at, you know, I think a lot of the residents can see that we're trying to make efforts to not have potholes and big cracks. And so the goal is to utilize these resources to, to have some of these streets. Because when, when there's a backup on 290 or Old Parsons, a lot of these neighborhood streets are driven on, so not that that's going to make a difference, but we just know when people drive through any parts of Maynor, they would otherwise, they can see that there was a level of care and concern brought before you to make sure those areas are touched, touched up. So that way, five, six years from now, seven years from now, hopefully, we can do the same thing and not wait 10 or 15 years. So the goal is to make sure those areas that hadn't been paved in several years will get paved this, this go down.
All right, questions, comments? Being none, entertain a motion, or questions or comments?
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve proposed change order number two for the fiscal year 2022 Capitol Metro paving project in the amount of $300,000, $330,909.80.
Got a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Wallace, is there a second? A second. Second by Councilwoman Moreno, any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? Being none in all in favor? Oppose? Motion passes. Consideration discussion, possible action on authorizing a project closeout letter to Capitol Metro for the one-time Capitol Metro BCT funding, funded pavement improvements project.
So this is to give Mr. Moore permission to submit the letter to Cap Metro to close out the project. That was a project that repaved Shadow Glen Boulevard and Lexington Boulevard. That was about .7 miles worth of repaving that we did. And this is just to close it out. We submit this documentation to Cap Metro and Cap Metro gives us the remaining funding for the project. So this is just required documentation that we need to send to Cap Metro.
All right, motion on the floor?
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the submittal project closeout documentation to Capitol Metro for the one-time Capitol Metro BCT-funded paving improvements project and authorize the city manager to request the remainder of the allocated funds for the one-time Capitol Metro BCT-funded paving, paving improvements project.
Got a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Moreno, is there a second?
Aye, second.
Second by Mayor Protem, may I hear, any questions to the motion? Any questions to the motion? Being none in all in favor? Oppose? Motion passes. All right, moving right along. Consideration discussion, possible action on a change order to construction contract for one-time BCT-funded pavement, funded pavement, paving improvements project.
So during construction, there were a few items that were not required. So this one is actually a deduct change order and so basically it's going to reduce the contract amount by $2,824.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion on the floor?
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve change order number two to the construction contract for the one-time BCT-funded paving improvements project.
Got a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Wallace, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Councilwoman, I'm asking for any questions to the motion? Any questions to the motion, being none in all in favor? Oppose? Motion passes. Okay. Hold on, hold up there, sir. Ms. Veronica, can you approach, please? Let's see. I need my lang, I need language for executive session for item eight. Am I going to use the one for child unemployment, but I just restate regarding that one. Restate.
It would be section 551071 and section one of the Texas Government Code and section 105 Texas Disciplinary Rules of Professional Conduct to consult with legal counsel.
Okay. City Council, we're now convening to execute a session pursuant to the provisions of chapter 551 Texas Gov. Code in accordance with authority contained in section 551.071 Texas Gov. Code and section 1.05 Texas Disciplinary Rules of Professional Conduct Consult with legal counsel. All right? Let's see, the time is now 8:48. City Council will now reconvene into open session pursuant to the provisions of chapter 551 Texas Gov. Code and take action if any items discussed during closed executive session. Number eight, consideration discussion and possible action on the franchise ordinance for municipal solid waste connection transportation and disposal, residential, commercial, and special... and disposal, uh residential, commercial and industrial industrial and recycling. Uh, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, um Scott Jones, Economic Development Director. And uh, thank you for your patience through this process. And uh, we have um brought before you um looked over multiple proposals that we had four different firms um respond to on R F P for the collection, transportation, disposal of solid waste and recycled materials in the city. And uh along with the city's consultants, solid waste specialists. Um, we went through a process of uh reviewing these proposals and um and uh reviewing the merits and uh grading them, if you will, on a uh scale. We had four different committee members, uh staff members that uh looked them over. And uh then the consultant took into account the um metrics involved and pricing uh solutions. And we put together a uh composite spreadsheet and presented them to city management. And um based upon those findings, he made a recommendation. And so that recommendation, um, we have Lynn Landtrip with uh S W S here. If you have any questions for him, um, based on that recommendation, we uh city management made the um, the choice of uh uh entering into an ordinance for franchise with waste Frontier Waste Solutions for the municipal waste collection, transportation, depo- disposal contract. And uh, staff recommends you uh approve that first reading and authorize the city manager to execute the final negotiated contract, which you have a copy of a draft of in your packet. So if you have any questions about that and or the process, um, I'm here, Mr. Landtrip's here and can answer any of your questions.
Any questions, council members? Let's see, what's his name again? Yeah, what's your name again?
Lynn Lynn Landtrip.
You want to come up, sir?
Ready for your questions.
Alright, um, just if you can say your name into the mic for recording purposes.
Lynn Landtrip here. I'm the principal for Solid Waste Specialists. You hired me to go through a process here for the city to uh sort of like a funnel. We went through a very detailed process of receiving these uh written responses. And the judges that were provided by the city manager uh reviewed each proposal and scored each proposal for a total possible score of sixty-five points. In addition to that, I took all of the pricing information that was sent in and extended it by the houses, by the dumpsters, by all of those items. That score had a maximum of thirty-five points. Those two were added together. And the uh the highest score uh turned out to be Frontier Waste. Uh, an interview with them uh indicated that they were not only extremely qualified, having only recently put on the cities of McKinney, Texas and Cleveland, Texas and Tomball, Texas, all this very recently. Uh, very qualified personnel and they are interested in opening shop in or adjacent to the city of Maynor. So it's going to be very close. Uh, biggest thing I've seen they had in their presentation that was other than their safety, which was very, it was a great presentation on safety. But their uh their telephone app that'll be made available to all Maynor residents and Maynor businesses allows communication and to counsel, uh allows uh real-time communication so that everybody knows where the truck is. If there's been a difficulty, they can hit that app and turn it in and it gets handled. Additionally, I thought one of the most important questions I asked in the interview was uh will you, who will you provide for someone in y'all's position? Or city manager, senior staff, who will you provide? Uh, or will you provide a particular person to take a phone call, not going through the normal uh roster? And they'd uh they have such a person, he's a high-ranking officer of the company. And uh, that was impressive. So they came in here ready to, ready to go. They had the highest score, had the lowest pricing. And that's uh, that's my recommendation.
Any questions, council members?
What was their way of addressing the bulk pickup?
It everything's going once a week. Bulk and brush are combined together. You can either have three uh three cubic yards is a, just a little bit larger than a refrigerator, just to put that in. Cause I know you guys don't talk about cubic yards on the council. Uh, six foot by three foot by three foot is three cubic yard. So you can either have that much brush or you can have that much bulk or you can combine the two. But rather than having the residents have to come up and uh bring it to public work, it's going to be done at the home every week on garbage collection day. Yeah, it's quite a, it is, it is a demonstrably higher level of service for literally only pennies more than what you're currently paying.
And what was their pricing?
Well, uh, I don't have my, let me see if I can. And I apologize, I I was going to make my PowerPoint presentation then. Okay, their, their home price was eighteen ninety-nine before the franchise is added. The city has a franchise that they pick up, which brings it to twenty eighty-nine. Overall pricing, just to give you the variance, they were the lowest at a total. And this is all items because you want to look at everything that's going to be affecting your citizens, which would be the home, their businesses and the large roll-off containers. Uh, their total for that was two thirty-one, five ninety-nine. The next closest was two forty-four. And that house rate on the next closest was nineteen ninety-five, roughly a dollar uh higher, right at a dollar higher.
Thank you.
And just, just to let you know, when you put the written uh score against the pricing score and added them together, their number was seventy-six point one. The next closest was seventy-one point eight. So it was demonstrably higher. Hopefully that answered your question. Yes, sir.
Other questions, comments?
Um, is that for one can and one recycling per household?
Yes, ma'am.
So it's be an extra charge for an extra can. Cause my household, we have two of each.
Yes, it was very reasonable. I think it was like seven dollars. I also wanted to, uh, we hammered this uh in the proposal that everything we're talking about here is all new. All new carts, all new dumpsters, a whole new appearance for this city. So not only is it going to be nice looking, but to get that brush and bulk out of there every week, the whole place is gonna, you're going to see a change.
Other questions, council members?
Um, was there a space in there that kind of talked to, that reserved for the level of customer service um to the residents that they offered and provided to our residents? Like, I guess sometimes the, some of the biggest complaints are if their trash was missed. Were they able to call and come back and or schedule a time for them to come back and get it? Or the way that their trash can was handled, if it happened to be damaged, is it, whose responsibility is it to be able to get a new trash can? Or how long does that take? Um, I guess even just in general, if they didn't pick it up or if something happens um while on their route, how well do they take care of, take responsible or accountability for?
Well, I'm going to share with you. Um, we've had, y'all are, I'm proud to say you're our twenty-third city to serve. Uh, out of the other cities, there's been a number of them where this firm has won. Uh, not, everybody's won some of them. Um, but one that really sticks out was uh this, this, this app that they use. Uh, it's called Track E Z and it is easy and everybody gets it. And when I called Pearland, which is a sizable city, because Mr. Moore asked me to call and get references. And I asked some pretty simple questions about what's the service. I want to make sure their service that I was asking about was like what you guys are going to get. And to a T, it was, or I didn't uh write it down. And then I just asked the recipient, I said, what if you had a score from one to ten, ten being great? What would you score? I had three towns. I got a ten, I got a ten, I got a eight. I asked them each your question, basically. And they said, it is outstanding. That's about all I can share with you is another, another town. Now, those are larger communities. But uh, that app, and then they're very responsive. The key to my questions in those interviews, Mr. Moore and Mr. Jones had good questions as well. Um, what kind of separates them from everybody else was there wasn't even a hesitation when I said, when I asked them, I said, I want to make sure in front of these senior people, I want to make sure that that they have someone, or you. We don't want calls. The whole idea of hiring me to find you a company is so you don't get a telephone call, to be very frank with you. But if it should occur. Uh, you know, you will be provided with a professional that will respond to you as you should in your position or them in their position. Not to say that the residents uh don't deserve the same, but you understand what I'm saying. They're going in and and over here, you will have this to take care of you. So when I heard that, I thought that meant a lot to me. That's before he asked me to make the reference checks. And when I did that, I thought that cements the whole the whole deal. So I, I have no, uh, my heart's good on this recommendation.
Other questions?
Was there another, um, I'm sorry, uh, was there another city of the twenty-three that we had or the twenty-two? Uh, was there another city that compared in our population size and also I guess our, our role layout, how we have some of that are closer in town and then further out and things like that.
Now, this particular firm did not win El Campo. You're kind of laid out a little bit like El Campo. Uh, but uh matter of fact, T D S won El Campo, funny that that run. But ha- that has a lot to do with the geography of the, where the, where the uh, the company's located, where the trucks and stuff are going to be. And that was a key piece that came up in the interview is the location being very close or possibly he'd have to tell you more if you have property available where they can do it. But the idea was if they can get in your town, you, you, it doesn't get better than that. Okay, so that, when they said that, I said, alright, this is a good deal. Uh, I apologize for not having a ready-made. It seems to me Tomball may be a little larger than you. Um, it, it's hard right now for me to come up with one that I could really answer your question. I'm not dodging it. I just don't have populations in my head.
I, I pulled them up on the website. There, um, Councilwoman Hill, there it says Del Valley, Mustang Ridge, um, Manchaca, Dripping Springs, Butte Lake, Travis.
I can relate to those.
Where do they uh dump at? Where do they take the trash to?
Uh, they're going to take it to the Williamson County landfill.
Other questions? Alright, take questions or question, questions, comments or a motion?
Did they give you any information on how they handle recyclables and recycling?
It was in the proposal. Now, my, my particular role, I did not read the books. The judges read the books. Now, Mr. Jones may remember, I don't know. So I can't answer that. Now, if they have representative here tonight, they could probably answer the question. I just assimilated the pricing piece. The judges on your staff did the reading. So they would have the answer to your question as opposed to me. I'd probably have to reread that book out of the four that I read before I could probably respond to it. Unless there's somebody here who wants to answer that.
I'm Tim Henderson. I'm a vice president with Frontier Waste. Uh, I'm one of the founders and one of the owners of the company. And um, so we'll take all the recyclables and they'll be processed by Balcony's Resources right here in Taylor. We'll deliver them over there and they process them and market them.
That's your question? Other questions? Go ahead.
Is there a plan for holidays if, if your pickup is scheduled on that holiday? Or would they? And it won't affect any of the normal schedule? So they would actually cover the day that was missed and then also whoever was scheduled on their Tuesday as well?
Since this is once a week service, everything moves forward one day. So somebody that normally when you get on Friday would go on Saturday at one time. But and they, I think there's only four holidays. I think we're only had in there. Most time they prefer to run.
Yeah.
It's on the, the, the uh, all this is on them, work with the staff to make sure the residents know. Uh, when there's not going to be a collection, it's going to move forward. They'll work with you on your website and all that sort of thing. That was pretty, everybody turned that in.
Yeah, holiday is defined as New Year's, Thanksgiving, New Year's Day, Thanksgiving Day and Christmas Day.
Right. So those are the only three holidays that we don't run on. All the other holidays will run on the normal schedule. And so if you just take Thanksgiving, for instance, we won't run on Thanksgiving Day. But we'll run the Thursday route on Friday and the Friday route on Saturday. So everything will be caught up by the weekend. And just those three holidays.
Other questions? Comments?
I think I have one more.
Go ahead.
In event, in an event of a disaster or um, yeah, and there's lots of debris and things like that. Where do you have the capacity? Do, do they have the capacity to be able to address our neighborhood and? I'm sorry. It was my last one.
So we actually have twenty locations in the state of Texas. And so we have over five hundred collection vehicles in the state of Texas. So I just give you an example. Uh, when Hurricane Harvey uh came through Houston, we were able to, we actually, our location that we had in Dayton, which is a little northeast of Houston, it actually got flooded. It was four feet underwater. But we were able to mobilize trucks from Dallas and Waco and some other locations and get them into town. And we, we didn't miss any of our collection schedules. And we were able to handle the cleanup debris that was a result of a lot of those hurricanes. So we were, we're, because we have such a, a large footprint, a large presence in the state, that enables us to be able to quickly mobilize and go to other areas if necessary.
Thank you.
How long is the contract with us for, if you were to get the contract?
Other questions, comments, motion?
Do you get penalized for missed collections?
There is a penalty language in the uh new contract, yes, and, and we've agreed to it. And I do wanna point out that we've never been fined or penalized in any of our municipal contracts.
Other questions, comments?
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the first reading of an ordinance for a franchise with Frontier Waste Solutions for the Municipal Solid Waste Collection, Transportation and Disposal Contract, Residential, Commercial, Industrial, and Recycling, and authorize the city manager to execute the final negotiated contract.
Well, motion on the floor by Councilwoman Wallace. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Mayor Pro-Chan Mimi Hill. Any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? Being none, all in favor? Poses, motion passes uh five, two. Thank you. Uh moving on, number nineteen, uh consideration discussion, possible action on fiscal year twenty twenty-four. CIP project option for twenty twenty-three certificates of obligation, funding, and commencement. Yes, sir.
Alright. Well, to, to recap, um, this is a revisitation of the um usage of the remainder of the fiscal twenty twenty-three uh certificate of obligation proceeds. Um I, I won't go into sort of the, all the historical detail to save time unless you all, you know, wanna hear that. But um uh back in um August, on August fifth, there was a joint meeting between the Capitol Committee and Council um to discuss the three options that had been proffered, um or considered by the Capitol Committee uh to the Council. And um the three options uh were comprised of different combinations of capital projects that were prioritized over a series of months uh from February of last year up until August. All three of the options, one, two, and three, are all within the, the fundable range of the available um bond proceeds uh that remain um from the, the budgetary perspective. The um Capitol Committee came back with a recommendation for option two. Um with a caveat that if there still needed to be a project removed for some budgetary purpose, um they recommended that it would be six B, which was the Lano and Lampasses Street interceptors. Um during the August fifth meeting, um uh the request was made to also look at um another alternative or option uh to be considered as well uh as an additional project, and that was the extension of uh water service um from the existing city's water line on the north side of two ninety um in front of the Maynor Heights um commercial tract uh to the new um city um owned property, Maynor Development Number One, on the south side of two ninety. Um so um in accordance with that directive, we assembled a cost estimate uh for that option to extend water to the tract. Um the total opinion probable cost was a million and a half dollars for that water line extension.
This is one of the things we went over in our, in the budget retreat, right?
Yes.
Okay. Does anyone have questions? Questions or comments related to um this uh project? I'll take questions or a motion?
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve and select an option for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four CIP project for twenty twenty-three certificates of obligation, funding, and commencement.
Well, motion on the floor by uh Councilwoman Ware. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Mayor Pro-Chan Mimi Hill.
Yeah, which option?
What option if you pick? Thank you all. What was, who was on CIP? You said y'all was option two?
Two was the one that was recommended by the Capitol Committee.
Read it again. Mayor City Council, I'd like to make a motion that the city council approve and select option two for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four CIP project for twenty twenty-three certificates of obligation, funding, and commencement.
Well, motion on the floor by Councilwoman Ware. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Mayor Pro-Chan Mimi Hill. Any questions to the motion? Uh mine is just to this team, city staff. I just wanna make sure, can we keep an eye on um those uh the debt service and our ability to move forward with our bond for our city facilities. So um as we're exploring these projects and, and, and moving forward with approval that we don't take on obligation that prevents us from those um uh bond uh projects. So uh we're gonna, we're holding y'all accountable to making sure that that doesn't happen. Alright? Alright. Any questions to the motion?
I did have a question. Option two, does that uh provide the least effect? On pro- on other projects that were coming, or is it gonna, how will, will it be negative or?
So, so maybe the best way I could address the question would be what, what it excludes. And so what that does not include in option two is the uh expansion of um Brenham um street um with, you know, east of nine seventy-three up to where the county has expanded it. So it's, right now, it's currently a two-lane road. And the county has just completed a five-lane section. And so that improvement project was to take it up to three lanes, a center turn lane, and then a lane in each direction. Um so that's the one thing that's excluded. Other than that, all of the other priority projects were included in, in that option two. So that's the only thing that's not included or excluded if you, if you select option two over option three. Option three includes Brenham Blake Maynor expansion.
And so if it's excluded, what happens? What's the next step with that, then? What's the other options for that?
Well, the, there may be some other potential funding sources for Brenham, Brenham Blake Maynor. Um or it could be funded through, you know, future bond issuances. Um the, the, as, as traffic, you know, continues to increase, that, that necking down as you come into town, um it's gonna become, you know, increasingly problematic. Um I haven't driven it since it's been completed at, at, you know, rush hour time. I know Pauline drove it the other day, and, and it wasn't that bad midday. Um but haven't, I haven't experienced it right now in its current state at, at a high-traffic volume time, so. Um it's, it's, it's gonna get worse, and really until the nine seventy-three bypass loop comes in.
Thank you.
Personally, I would say that something needs to be done because of how what the county has done ended and how ours begins. It's dangerous right there on that curve, so we do need to do something with that section.
This would improve, that, that roadway improvement would in, would improve turning movements, and also provides for the extension of um the, the shared-use path that the county's planning on putting in as part of their roadway improvement. So it would provide some continuity there uh from a bike and pedestrian.
And I would say, Council, just, when I was riding the chief earlier, we just, we realized that some of the things that we've been missed out on for is working with the county and coming down Old Parsons. It's just, when the, and that section of Brenham, we know that with the county doing their part, you know, we tried to get some, our roadways in that bond for the county, and it got missed again. And so we have to take it upon ourselves to, to think about some of those um roadways. And we know there's a good amount of traffic that comes in from the southeast that one way. And, and I know you look at three hundred thousand dollar difference, but I think there may be something we need to, we may come back and say, hey. It, it's, cause when we talked about it, the way the guardrails are, it, it's like when we ever do some significant maintenance on it. So we'd just be doing a lot of patchwork like the county does on some of the other roads, because we don't have the, the particular width to, to do something. And the county, again, like nine seventy-three, that would come into two ninety, you go from six down to two. And from county, you go from five down to two. And so it would always be left upon us, what, what this man are thinking, they know, and see. So we're just trying to make sure we, when we look at these roadways, and we try to not anticipate something significantly happen. There's only one way to get to southeast part without going all the way around the whole guy. Yeah, so we need some extra width on a lot of the roadways, and that's, again, trying to get stuff added to Campo, and we've, we've had a lot of missed opportunities, so we have to, we have to advocate for some of these roadways. Uh you know, it's gonna be an expense, but as we advocate, we're trying to make sure we don't look back in five years and maybe we missed an opportunity.
And, and, and one thing to clarify is that these projects are for year one and year two of the overall project plan. So um that, that money for the Brenham Blake Maynor Road improvements is really to get the project started and get preliminary engineering and design uh conducted. Um and so the construction of it is, is, is gonna be in a future uh bond project or future project. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, um, you know, on the schedules for all of those, yeah.
But you're saying in option number two, that's not even in there?
No, no. There's no, there's no money allocated towards even that preliminary engineering and design work in option two.
But if we were to pick option three, there's enough funding there to handle that?
To go ahead and get that going, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any other questions, comments? Alright, um take a vote. All in favor? Oppose? Oh, we gotta do that again, cause I think I missed one. All in favor? Oppose? Motion pass six, one.
And so that was for option two, correct?
Yes. Alright, moving on, um. Uh consideration discussion, statement of work for um uh number thirty-one to master services agreement with George Butler Associates for East Texas, East Travis County Regional um wastewater treatment plant uh permit application.
So we've only been anticipating this since about two thousand and six. Um it's been a little while in the coming, um but we're finally to the point now with the um wastewater master plan work that has been done, and the timing of development over on the east side of Maynor. Um particularly in the Cottonwood, but you know, now there are also rumors of other development going on in Willow Creek Basin to the east of there as well, too. Um it's, it's time to um get going on permitting the hundred-acre site that the city secured at the confluence of um the four drainage basins there. And so that's what this proposed statement of work is for, is to um generate and submit the application for the East Travis Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant um for a phased um approach to the plant that would include um, um a one-point-five, a three-point-zero, and a six-point-zero million gallon per day um phased capacity uh build-out. Um that wouldn't be the ultimate for the facility, um but it's what could be justified within a potential uh permit term. Um and so there, you know, as development would build out further on that, there would be expansions uh contemplated to the ultimate capacities.
Um comments, questions or a motion?
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the statement of work number thirty-one to the Master Services Agreement with George Butler Associates, Inc., for the East Travis Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant permit application in the amount of fix- fifty-six thousand six hundred dollars.
Uh motion on the floor by Councilman Moran. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Councilwoman Wallace. Any questions to the motion? Any questions to the motion? Being none, all in favor? Poses, motion passes. Consideration and discussion, possible action on statement of work number thirty-two to master service agreement with George Butler Associates, Inc. Inc. for the Will, um Willbarger Creek Water Waste, uh wastewater treatment plant, TCEQ permit renewal.
Yes, so this um permit is for the uh renewal. Um we're not proposing any um minor amendment amendments to uh the permit application. Um but this is for the, the regular regulatory removal of the um uh TPDES permit for the Willbarger Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the statement of work number thirty-two to the waste, uh to the Master Services Agreement with George Butler Associates, Inc., for the Willbarger Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant Discharge Permit Renewal, renewal in the amount of thirty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars.
Motion on the floor by Councilman Moran. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Councilwoman Wallace. Any questions to the motion? Any questions to the motion? Being none, all in favor? Poses, motion passes. Consideration, discussion, possible action on statement of work number thirty-three to the master service agreement for with George Butler Associates, Inc., for Kittenwood Creek Water Waste Water, Wastewater Treatment Plant, TCEQ permit renewal. Same thing.
So this is the um renewal for the Cottonwood Wastewater Treatment Plant. Um this is a bit of a hedge. Um there's a potential that the current amendment that this uh, that the commission is considering, we may be able to get that shifted to become a renewal as well. Um we've inquired with the, the TCEQ staff. Haven't received an answer back yet. Um but the, the hedge is, is that if, in the event it's not, there would be sufficient time to get the application completed and submitted prior to, six months before um the permit expires, which is in June of next year. So basically before December, we'd need to have it ready to go and submitted. And so hopefully, we can get it approved as an amendment and renewal, and this work doesn't need to be done. Um but we wanted to get it there. We worked with staff on it and elected to have that in place, so work could get going on it right away. And we expect to get word back very soon. We've put in requests to um uh the team lead, and um hope to hear back from him directly on that.
Alright, questions, comments? Questions, comments, motion?
Mayor Ca- Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the proposed statement of work number thirty-three to the master service agreement with George Butler Associates, Inc., for the Cottonwood Creek Wastewater Treatment Discharge Permit Renewal in the amount of eighteen thousand six hundred and eighty dollars.
Uh motion on the floor by uh Councilman Moran. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Mayor Pro-Chan Mimi Hill. Any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? Being none, all in favor? Poses, motion passes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir. Consideration, discussion, possible action on a code of conduct policy addressing disruptive behavior in city uh owned facilities and on city-owned property. Mr. Moore?
Mayor Council, um this item is brought before you due to some, you know, recent activities that we've had at City Hall and in other facilities. And we felt there were some other measures that needed to be put in place, so we can practically deal with some things before it escalates. And one of the things we talked about is to make sure we had some type of process to, when things get out of hand, we don't have to wait for something to really escalate. And so we wanna put something in place to protect not only administrative staff, but the staff in general on our property. Making sure those proper things are posted, so when things are out of hand, lead to that, we, we have some measures to know that our working place is gonna be safe and not gonna be subject to. That, that our working place is gonna be safe and not gonna be subject to unwanted attacks and unwanted. Behavior that leads to our, our workforce feeling, um, fearful of situations to, to like. Until police gets here. So we wanna make sure that we had some, some parameters in place to allow us to be able to, um. One strike and that's it, not to get two or three strikes. Because when staff is on the phone and people are being hostile. Our goal is to defuse and have those particular residents that come here, take them to the side and really get the situation. Because a lot of times administrative people that are on the phone are not subject to, um, some of the things that are thrown at them. So. Uh, the goal is to make sure we can keep a safe place, but allow us to be in a position to address it with the resident, to not where our staff feels. They can't do their job effectively. So we want to make sure this was brought before you, um, to re, to review and then, um, give us further direction on it.
Thank you. Does there, is there a draft policy somewhere that we're supposed to have? It says direction, but it also says attachment.
Yes, and I apologize, I did send it in, um, earlier this afternoon and it might not have been sent over to you. Uh, I can go ahead and provide you some highlights of it, or if you'd like, I, we can go make copies and table this item.
We can come back to it. Um, after executive, that way you have time to make copies.
Okay.
Uh, jump down to, uh, number twenty-four. Consideration, discussion, possible action on Texas Municipal League Region Ten Director Election.
Uh, Mayor Council, this item is brought before you, um, in consideration, uh, Mayor Harvey's been selected to be on the, the ballot. For Region Ten Director. Uh, so we need, uh, I guess council's endorsement for this, uh, vote to be cast on, on the city's behalf.
So y'all got three choices. Take a motion on who you would like to elect.
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we vote for Mayor Harvey as a Texas Municipal League. TML Region Ten Director and authorize the city manager to submit the casting vote on behalf of the city.
Uh, motion on the floor by Councilman Moreno. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Mayor Paul Timon Lee Hill. Any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion?
Will there be snacks involved?
I'm just one, I'm just number ten. I don't. This, I would be number ten. So every, all the other cities have to vote. So it could be, um. They're tallying up all the city votes and between myself, um, Councilmember Jenkins and Member Tim Thompson. And then whoever gets it, gets it for ten. So, um, ask the question again as we find out who wins. See who's gonna give you snacks. Alright, um, no other questions, comments, uh, all in favor? I don't know, can I vote? Pose. Motion passes. Alright. Thank you, thank you. Uh, City Council now reconvene, uh, convene into executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code five, five, one. Um, in accordance with the authority contained in five, five, one, zero, seven, one, five, five, one, zero, seven, two. Texas Government Code, Section one point zero five, Texas Department Rules of Professional Conduct Consult with Legal Counsel and to deliberate with real. Uh, the, the per, deliberate, the purchase of real property, um. Uh, five, five, one point zero, seven, one, Texas Government Code, Section one point zero five, Disciplinary, Texas Disciplinary Rules. First kind to consult with legal counsel regarding child of input. Um, five, five, one point zero, seven, one, second, Texas Government Code, Section one point zero five, Texas Disciplinary Rules of Professional Conduct Consult with the Council Garden. Hibbs name parcel and Section five, five, one point zero, seven, four, personnel matters discussed duties of city manager. And we'll start with. Time is ten forty-eight P M. Uh, City Hall will now reconvene to open session pursuant to the provisions of Chapter five, five, one, Texas Government Code and take action if any. On items discussed during closed executive session. Uh, item number twenty-three, consideration, discussion, possible action on code of. Conduct policy addressing disruptive behavior in, uh, city owned facilities and on, uh, city owned property. Um. We have, um, is there a motion to direct staff? On this item? It's in the language already. Yeah, turn on the mic.
Mayor Councilmember Veronica Ribera, Assistant City Attorney, um, there, this item was placed for discussion purposes. So if you would like to, there's no need for a motion, but if you would just like to direct staff and city legal on what else. You may wanna see in this policy and we can bring back, uh, we can bring it back to you.
I think declaring out, uh, what th- those behaviors would be.
Okay.
Um, and then, um. Any other additional, um, lengths of time that maybe other cities had in regards to the length of time from trespass. And what is, council members? So yeah, just those, um, uh, if you can bring back some additional, spell out the behaviors. Um, a list of what additional times, uh, other cities had in regards to length of that. And then, um. Think we'd like to know, um, to explore the, um, all property. Um, banned during that time period. Alright. Council members, y'all good? Alright, ten fifty-one, this meeting is adjourned.